Okay, I'd like to call the meeting, a special meeting of the Urbana City Council, to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, December 16th, 2013.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Roberts, seconded by Ammons, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Petitions and communications, is there anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Do you have any cards, Phyllis?
No.
Okay, I don't have any either.
I think Ford, they turned him into Charlie.
I've got everything for the committee meeting, but you could switch to the council if you prefer. Yeah, that's probably worth, this is more than the council.
Okay.
Yeah. You have your stuff.
Okay.
So, Loretta, do you want to be committee or council?
Me, committee. Not committee yet.
Okay. Okay, I only have one person, Paul Muth.
Paul Muth, resident at 207 West Illinois in Urbana. And I've got about three subjects here, I'll try and limit myself. And I, two of them are sort of tales from other cities, one of them Champagne and one of them Berkeley. But first off, I'd really like to get behind the task force on iDOT, those traffic stops, I think that should be expedited. Other things could be added later, but I really think that that's an important thing. And I approve the resolution, I was here witnessing the resolution as it was passed on previous occasion. From Champagne, I've been thinking about this problem of the tweeting and the FOIA's, and I just wonder if Urbana has policy on devices and tweeting, and even external email, or, I guess there is no external email. It seems to me email's gotten so fundamental, but it just sort of happened that way. And I think a public body like the city council would be better off, better served by some kind of, sort of a blog of discussion, so that everything was available, except as, if you have a meeting like you had earlier, where you're discussing stuff that you can't have out in the open. But instead of having an email list, have a blog, and even the things that you were doing even during the meeting, if you want to do that, I haven't seen anybody do that. And I think it's probably a better idea not to. But, so that all of the communications would be transparent and available, be commented on and read. And not, I mean, with an email, you can do a digest, but that happens daily or something, I don't know, you can set it up. But I really think that Urbana should be in the forefront of adopting a technology that's democratic and transparent. And I think that that would be a great thing. And it's sort of predicated on the fact that they're having this thing over in Champagne, where people are using their devices. Like I said, you could link and write only on this open blog, that would be, and then available to citizens immediately, so. I had, Charlie, I think, sent out a New York Times piece by, I'm forgetting her name now, famous feminist, Gloria Steinem, about the Berkeley City Council actually acted. They had a system of ranking new business, where there were like 39, and this idea of solidarity with people opposing militarism of Jeju Island in South Korea was 39. But somehow it got bumped up, and they've actually acted on it. They're the only political entity in the world that's acted in solidarity with this rather valiant struggle against this huge naval base that's bigger than anything that the South Korean Navy needs. It's clearly a basing site for Aegis-class anti-ballistic missile cruisers that only the US has. So, why I'm talking about this is because I think social justice is a very important thing for the city council to be seized with. And I remember the days when the news gazette constantly lampooned Urbana City Council for being involved in the CU nuclear freeze movement, or the anti-apartheid struggle, saying, "Why don't you fix the potholes?" Well, I think, should fix the potholes, but I think that it's important as a political unit that the Urbana City Council could reflect some of the opinions. And I'm not calling for immediate action on this, but I'm really disgusted with the servile and docile press that nobody knows about this issue. Gloria Steinem actually had a New York Times piece and was interviewed on CNN, but that's the last anybody's heard of this, this big struggle that's going on that will affect the entire world politics for so many, is that not five minutes yet? Somebody's watching a clock here.
It's the clerk. It's the clerk.
Oh, I have one minute left. Well, I don't need it, so.
[laughing]
But, but again, I really urge people to consider something other than this email list. We need to see what, saw what happened with the Champagne County Board when they were using, you know, email to not have meetings in reference to the jail building program that didn't exist. But it did, and they got around open meetings. I just think that Urbana should champion a new method of making sure that it's entirely, the discussion is entirely transparent. So, thanks for your attention.
Okay, thank you very much. Eric? I think I have a question for you. Paul?
Paul? It's just a clarification. For the record, I have never texted another city council person from here, but I do occasionally during meetings-
Take a notification?
I do occasionally text my wife to give her an update on when to expect me home.
Right, okay. Well, and I know people might have some urgency that they have to be notified about, but, but yeah, it'd be better probably not to use them at all. But if you guys want to have a conversation underneath the meeting and text across, I think it should be transparent and should go up on this blog, so.
We don't do it. I've never sent a text to anybody else during a meeting.
Okay, right.
Or have I ever received one?
Well, apparently, they got their toys in Champagne, and I just wanted to see if there was any policy. It seems like official policy on use might be good in advance.
There's the Open Meetings Act, and we get training on that every year.
Right.
So, that's why, it's never been a problem in Urbana.
Yeah, we just don't do it because it would violate the Open Meetings Act.
Yeah. But-
We learned that very early on, so we've never done it.
Okay. Well, but what about email that circulated amongst y'all? I mean, this, how-
People are very careful not to send it out to the whole group, if it's a discussion. It has to be one-on-one.
Hmm.
So, we do-
And then it isn't-
We get training from our attorneys on this.
Okay, all right. Very good.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Okay. Unfinished business, continued discussion of iDOT. I was asked to work with Carol and Bill, and I sent out a draft, which anybody, if they don't have it with them, I'd be happy to give them a copy. And then Bill has some other suggestions, so, how do you want to start? Bill?
Yeah, we had a couple of different versions, and I tried to combine them a little bit and put it in resolution form. So, I guess it's up to the council what we want to do as far as moving one of these forward, or pass it, I guess, can we pass it tonight, or we would have to advance?
Well, you know, it was, the motion, which was kind of interesting, it was to keep it in committee until the council meeting of January 6th. But since we really haven't had this out in the public, I would say that what's on the agenda is proper, it's continued discussion. And so you might want to revisit it at the committee before you decide what to vote on, so everybody has a chance to know exactly what we're talking about. We need to get it out there on the website.
So, maybe you can just read it, read what's being recommended so far.
Which one?
Well, would you like me to talk about mine first? Do you want to go with yours, or what? How do you want to do it?
Um, okay. Why don't you talk about yours?
Okay, we, this was, I talked with Carol individually, and then with Bill, and we sent emails individually. So, mine says, "The city of Urbana, I felt from the discussion, I looked at the whole discussion on the 13th," I think it was the 13th, or was it the 16th? Well, anyway, the last committee, the whole meeting, and it, I felt that from the discussion that the council members wanted a broader focus than just the iDOT number, because we're talking about a whole problem for society on bias. So, the way I did this was to talk about what the title should be, I proposed, and I'm certainly open, I know Mike Madigan had a, didn't particularly like this suggestion, so he might have another thought. But mine says, "The city of Urbana will establish a social justice task force for the purpose of studying traffic stop statistics, incarceration rates, high school graduation rates, and employment statistics, in order to identify accurate measures of racial disparities and establish benchmarks to measure progress in reducing disparities." That, actually, a lot of that was written by Bill. "The task force will identify factors that contribute to disparities and prioritize what remedies would have the greatest impact, including those which the city may implement on its own, and those which will require action at the state or federal level. The following is an outline of the proposed research. One, evaluate Illinois Department of Transportation iDOT traffic stop data in order to increase understanding of how the ratio is calculated, and whether it is a reliable indicator of racial bias, and provide guidance on eliminating any," that should be "any," racially disparate impacts which may be identified. "For purposes of understanding the context of the Urbana data, the task force should analyze comparable data for the city of Champagne, the University of Illinois, and Champagne County, for a full understanding of differences in both reported traffic stops and underlying population data. The city council and the task force will develop specific questions to help direct the analysis. Two, the overall social context of Urbana will be described with comparisons over time, for example, from 2000 to 2010, based on census data, and any more recent data which may be available. A," and this is actually something that's in the goals already, it was a community report card, we haven't finished it yet, but it seems like a logical place to put it. "Incarceration rates by race, how many Urbana residents were in the county jail for the past year? What were they charged with? What were they sentenced to? Where were they born? What is their educational level? What was their reported occupation? And how have these statistics changed over the past 10 years? What was the total jail population for the past year? Where did the inmates list as their home address? And how many were reported as homeless? Then, employment and unemployment rates in Urbana by race and age. High school graduate, graduation rates from public and private schools by race for Urbana residents. And poverty levels in Urbana by race and age." And I think that we also need to go by a suggestion of Bill, which was specifically to look at the students at the university as a separate group, because they've got, they're very different by race and age, and also income levels, it's just, and they don't drive as much as the rest of the population, yet they are half of the population of Urbana. So, we do need to look at different groups. "The task force shall be composed of 11 members, at least two members will have education and expertise in statistics. One council member may serve on the task force, and I've already asked Eric Jacobson if he would be willing to do so, and he would be. Other members shall be chosen from applicants based upon their knowledge and understanding of sociology, law enforcement, or other relevant experience, and a demonstrated ability to be objective and respectful in dealing with people from other backgrounds, cultures, and opinions. Applicants are not required to live in the city of Urbana, but should be representative of the ethnic mix of Urbana. Appointments to the task force and selection of a chair will be made by the mayor with the approval of the city council. Applications shall be received through February 2014, and the task force will be appointed in March 2014. The task force will establish a regular time and place for a monthly meeting in city facilities following the Open Meetings Act. Meetings shall be video recorded with video posted to the Urbana website. Staff from the Urbana Human Relations Commission and Civilian Police Review Board will provide administrative support. The task force will provide at least bimonthly progress reports to the city council. The task force will report preliminary findings in writing on or before March 31st, 2015, with a public presentation and opportunities for the public to ask questions. The report will be available for public comment for a period of 30 days, and written comment will be received, will be included in the final report." And I will say that the task force would be following the Open Meetings Act, which means it would be open to the public, and they would have public participation. So, Bill?
Okay, so, I took aspects of that and tried to summarize maybe the biggest changes, trying to reduce the scope a little bit, and not expand it quite as much to look at the various statistical measures of the different social things, like incarceration rates, unemployment, graduation rates. A lot of that's been done, and it would probably be good to have a summary of that. I don't know if the task force needs to do it, or if the HRC could do it, or they could work together on it, but it could be presented with their final report, probably. So, should I just read the whole thing, or?
So, what you're reading is a combination of what the mayor's presented, what I gave you, and then yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is, so this is-
What I presented was also a combination.
Yeah, okay. We can decide which parts we want, I guess. Okay, so, this is a resolution authorizing the creation of a task force to recommend how the city can improve understanding of data compiled in the iDOT traffic study, and respond to concerns raised by social service organizations. Whereas, the city of Urbana has reviewed reports from the Illinois Department of Transportation iDOT statistical study of traffic stops since its beginning in 2004. And whereas, the city also collected data on its own for several years prior. And whereas, the city paid for a statistical analysis of the iDOT study covering years 2007 to 2009. And that study raised additional questions that can only be explored further utilizing local knowledge of demographics, driving, and enforcement patterns. And whereas, on October 7th, 2013, the city council was presented a petition by social justice groups that are well-established and active locally, and have historically been well-informed of racial justice issues, such petition asking for creation of a citizens' traffic stop data committee. And whereas, upon discussion, council members recognize that unique local demographics, such as student population and commuting patterns affecting, affect the predicted racial composition of drivers in Urbana, and social and economic factors may also influence the racial makeup of drivers stopped for traffic stops. And whereas, upon further discussion, the Urbana City Council recognizes the need for a focused task force to provide additional information to the city. And whereas, the city takes seriously the intent embodied in its human rights ordinance to end discrimination, recognizes the potential for discrimination in routine policing activities, and strives to prevent discrimination, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Urbana, Illinois, as follows. "Section 1, the city of Urbana will establish a traffic stop data task force to identify and study any racial disparities that may exist in local traffic stop data for the purpose of understanding the source and cause of the disparity. Section 2, the task force will examine multiple aspects of the iDOT traffic stop data, including not just the reported ratio based on race, but also including driver age, residence, stop time, stop location, reason for stop, vehicle age, and any of the dozens of data items collected in the data the committee finds useful. In order to provide a broader social context, and to allow for comparisons and alternate analysis, the task force will also compile statistics from existing sources such as census data, unemployment data, high school graduation rates, and incarceration data from the September 2013 study of Champagne County Justice System." That was the ILPP study that was just completed last fall. "For additional social context, the task force will evaluate input from the community describing personal experiences and impressions of traffic stops. Section 3, the task force shall be composed of 11 members, at least two members," that's really about the same as the previous one.
It's probably identical, right?
Uh, I think down toward the bottom, there was this suggestion, change appointments to task force will be made by the mayor with the approval of city council. Applications shall be received through February 2014, and the task force will be appointed in March 2014. The task force will select a chair from among its members. Section 4, regular times, same as the other one. "Section 5, the task force will provide at least bimonthly progress reports to the city council. The city council may submit questions to be researched by the task force. Section 6, the task force will report preliminary findings, including any policy recommendations in writing on or before April 30th, 2015." I think I added a month to that, "with a public presentation and opportunities for public to ask questions. The report would be available for public comment for a period of 30 days, and written comment received would be included in the final report."
Well, my comment on this is that I would support the language of this second resolution, mainly because my concern with the mayor's proposal was that it did broaden the scope of the task force, and I really believe it's important for us to focus on the issue that was brought to us last fall, and that is traffic stops. And so, we can look at traffic stops and, in the related social context, but I'm happy to see that the second resolution focuses on traffic stops. And we have an opportunity to really drill down and look at this question once and for all, and I think the second resolution gets at the important task at hand. So, I'd be willing to support this one.
Dennis?
I also think that the document that Bill drafted seems to be focused and fair, and a little more to the point of the task that we were given originally. And I like the freedom of the committee to pick its own chairman, I think that's an important aspect of its constituency. We realize that all the people who have asked for the task force to be formed are free to apply to be on the commission, and we would encourage them to do so, with this is going to be a truly representative body. So, I think that we've kind of seen a couple of different versions of it, and I think this seems to be well-crafted and fairly, very well-balanced, and more focused, so I think it sounds like the best one.
Eric?
Well, I guess that I do, you know, I want us to, to look squarely and honestly at the issue of the traffic stops. That being said, it's, I think, once this committee starts to meet, it may be in the situation of something like, you know, you go to put, you repair the siding on your house, and you discover all sorts of things underneath that you didn't quite know were there. So, I would like to give the committee the freedom to maybe explore things that emerge in their initial conversations, or in the initial feedback that the committee gets from the public. I don't know exactly how to word that, but I'd like that to be, I'd like that to be built in. I guess I'd also like to comment on the notion that in one spring, we will settle once and for all, anything about the history of these issues that, you know, have taken literally, you know, centuries to, to work themselves out. I think that one of the best things that could come from this committee is the framework for a continuing discussion across the community, a continuing means of communication between the different communities that we have, ranging from different ethnic communities, from the student body, the people we charge with enforcing the law, that, that we could open up a continual pathway for constructive dialogue. We're not going to get agreement on everything, but we could aspire to a situation where everybody actually understands the perspective of other people who are involved in this, and in the immediate context, the perspective of the police officer, and the perspective of the person who has, who has stopped, but more broadly, the perspective of all of us as we go about the city, who encounter people who are very different from ourselves. And I think we need that, that, we need a platform for a continual, open dialogue to build, you know, trust, and to build perspective among different people. So, I'd like for this committee to at least, to have the freedom to, to develop that, or maybe even have a mandate to, if they can, build a framework for continued discussion between people of different races, different perspectives, in all kinds of ways.
Charlie?
Let me, I'm going to tackle something I think maybe Bill would address as the author of this, but, and going backwards here, I think that the task force needs to tackle the problem at hand first, and if other things come out of it over time, maybe that will develop. I mean, you know, a year from now, and based on the, every other month reports, we can see where things are going. I think the issue that you've raised is one that the police department and others in the city have tried to tackle through time, and maybe this is yet another attempt at finding a good way to establish dialogue. We have a very diverse community, and it changes all the time, because the students move in and out, and faculty move in and out, and people move, it's a very transient community. And so, so maybe this can get to, but I think we have to tackle the issue at hand first, and then see what develops. I think section 2, the way I read it, and partly, there's a, the addition, "and to allow for comparisons and alternate analyses," that was something I asked to be included here. And I think the combination of, of the first, second, and third sentences here addresses some of the issues you've raised. It allows the task force to go out and look at some alternate analyses, get additional data, you know, if they want to, if they want to do comparisons against Champagne, or the county, or whatever, or the state, they're free to do that as they see fit. So, I think that the task force is given flexibility here in section 2, reading it in its broadest way. I think that's what Bill was intending, and that's, and with the addition that I asked for, which is included here, I think it's, it's enough to let the committee figure its own path. I don't know if Bill, if I've addressed that correctly, Bill, or not.
Yeah, I think I was trying to leave it a little bit open, because I think it will probably evolve in response to council input with their bimonthly reports. We would probably have input, there'd be a lot of public input, so I imagine, hopefully they'll have a little bit of flexibility to expand or refine their mission. And I think in general, people tend to look at this issue in a couple of different ways. You look at it as either, you know, the police are doing something wrong, and that's why these minority numbers are higher. Or you look at it as, oh, it's just a descriptive statistic, it's just like unemployment, minority numbers are higher because it's a social, you know, it's a product of the social conditions. And I think what we're trying to do is ask the task force to, obviously, the answer's somewhere in between there, and that we're asking the task force to kind of figure out what issues go into that, and what kind of policies we might be able to change or come up with that would help address some of that. So, yeah, I think you're right. I think the task force needs to have some flexibility.
Carol?
I also wanted to, just for the public who didn't get to see this document yet, because it's in draft form, I am going to certainly want us to put the document out for public comment before we do anything else. But a couple of things that were raised in us attempting to do this, although I do agree that there are many areas of disparity that can be studied, there are a plethora of areas, and certainly does not preclude any open body, like there is a platform that we have, which is the HRC, that has taken up issues that we've brought to the HRC here in Urbana, which is a benefit to the community. So, I've never experienced the HRC saying, you know, "We don't want to study employment disparities." So, I don't believe in this task force, it's necessary for us to put all of those parameters there. However, if they emerge, as we saw in the jury study in Champagne County, they started off with this very linear focus, but it did take them to the state, it took them to all these different areas that impact juries. And, and they didn't limit their work, because it moved them around. And I would imagine this will not be limited either. I also want to dispel, for those who attempt to put this out, is that the goal of the task force, my initial thought on it, Bill's thought, and I'm hoping the mayor's thought, is that we are not in any way, shape, or form trying to issue some process of discipline for police officers, or direct their day-to-day, or tell them what to do. Our goal as a council is to talk to the chief of police who works for the council, and say, "Here are things that have come to us from the community that you have to consider in your day-to-day operations." But this came to us from, not only the public, but we've received this every year for the last several years, and at this point- last several years, and at this point, it's the council's responsibility to respond to the recommendation and find out what the driving factors are behind the disparity, which is why we came up with the task force in the first place. So it's not to limit or to say you have bad officers, or any of those type of comments that will make an assumption that our goal is to make Urbana look bad, our police department look bad, or any other such antique that is used to keep us from really responding to the real crises that may be affecting one community as opposed to another, that is not the goal. I believe the recommendation, as it's been blended, I can accept, although I've shared with Bill that part of it I don't necessarily agree with, but you can't get everything that you want in every part of the process, you have to be able to negotiate your way to an end result, and I think Bill's is the best end result that we can put forward and let it develop as it is going to develop.
Based on what Carol just said, I'd like to move this to the next council meeting for approval.
Okay. Any other discussion? So you're talking about the one that Bill just wrote?
Yep.
Okay. Move it to the next council meeting for approval. Okay. Any discussion? All the, oh, Eric?
Yeah, my, the only question I would raise about that is, will we, can we, can we post it immediately, as opposed to waiting until the meeting notice, so that the public has a little more chance to weigh in?
I think we can post it immediately, but you also might want to have comment on it at the next committee meeting, because that gives you more chance for people to respond. There's another committee meeting before the council meeting.
No, there isn't. Next council meeting will be next Monday.
All right, we're off. We've got another schedule here.
That's, that's what's confusing this. If we want to, if we want to, we could, we could send this to committee in two weeks.
Yeah, I think if he better...
But then it'll be three weeks before it'd be approved.
Well, you know, you put a date of April in there anyway, right, for the ending? Yeah, so, it just depends on how much time do you want people to have to comment on it?
I'm flexible. If you want to send it to committee in two weeks with this one, or we can put it up on the web and...
Well, we should put it up on the web so people can comment, and they might want to, so the next meeting will be the council meeting then? On the 21st.
Right, or we could send this to committee.
So that gives us one week.
Gives us one week. Or we could send it to committee on the 28th, which would send it to February's first February meeting for approval.
Yeah, I mean, you could do it that way, because it gives people more time, if they want to know about it. Yes.
I defer to Carol's on this one.
So I would suggest posting it immediately, which would give people a week to comment. If in a week, we get a sense from the response that we've gotten, that it actually needs to season a little bit more, then it could be put over to the next council meeting, or we could act on it.
Yeah, we could. Okay. Okay, everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Okay, the next item... She's, they're sending it to the next council meeting, which is next Tuesday. Okay? And we're going to put it on the, they're going to put it on the website, so people can comment on it.
And they can comment.
If they submitted something. Okay, the next item is new business, an appointment to the Sustainability Advisory Commission, I am recommending Brian Sproul. Move approval?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. I believe the next three items have been, the person who is promoting these, this planned unit development is not here, and would like to be present when they're discussed. Is Libby here? Oh, you want to take them off and move them to the next council meeting?
They've asked if they can be continued to February 3rd, when they're back in town.
Okay. So we can just do that?
Yeah, I'll move items 2, 3, and 4 to the February 3rd council meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. I would like to read something that we got by email. This was to the Director of Public Works, Bill Gray, regarding the professional performance of the street maintenance teams during the last snowstorm. The evening of January 10th, I observed a team of two men physically removing slush from the storm drains at Oregon and Cedar. There was enough time to go out and thank them before they moved on. The snowplow drivers are continuously moving, continually moving, and I never get to thank them personally. In this correspondence, I would like to thank the entire department for the excellent and conscientious work performed during all the seasons. Every direction I looked during the storm, there was a public works truck clearing the streets and putting ice melt down. There has been a special effort around Lille School to provide safe pedestrian traffic for children and parents. During the period of leaf fall, the leaf sweeping from the streets was also commendable. I live on the corner and catch blown-in leaves from all directions. In particular, when leaves fall on the streets, the wind can carry them onward, covering my yard. Not only do I appreciate the street sweep, but also the leaf collections available to residents. While I am writing, I should mention the recycle collections weekly, and the crew who repair the streets, filling in potholes and cracks. There are going to be a lot of those. I suppose other residents of Urbana are as grateful as I, and perhaps do not speak out. Living in Urbana and paying my real estate taxes is painless, when they come back to me in such superb city service. I hope all the employees of the work teams can see this thank you note, and I, and know how much they are appreciated. And I wrote to her, and I think, thanking her for taking the time to appreciate our crews, because they did a fantastic job. Eric?
So I am moved, Bill, to thank you and your team publicly for figuring out how knocked to toss snow into the driveway of my constituent, who has come to, who came to me with that problem. So thank you very much. Please pass my thanks on to your folks.
And I'll just, I'll just do the same, because I got an opportunity to ride this time, Diane, it was superb. We had a ball, my son also had a chance to ride, so it was really great. And that we got major compliments on how quickly Urbana cleared our streets. Ours are really, really quick. I almost got stuck on the other side of the other city. But we had ours, ours was very clean, so we had, we had a really nice time riding in the snowplow, and just seeing how they systematically, very carefully, clear those streets and how quickly they do it.
And I will say that we do get complaints from people about why wasn't their street done earlier. And the Public Works Department actually has a program of rotating which residential streets they're going to start first each year. I think it's a very fair program. Their top priority is obviously the main arterials, because the big goal is to get the streets clear, so we can get emergency equipment through, fire trucks and police cars. And so, there is a huge effort to be very fair about it, and we do not do the parking lots for the city parks, those are the park district's responsibility, and they do a good job. Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.